We do have a lot of guests here, and I'm sure you guys might be similar. So it's five o'clock, so we will call a meeting order, and we should have an agenda in front of us. And he changes on, I think he was going to say this is what he is.
Yeah.
That's me, that got the promotion to second for proof that all the people say, ah.
Ah.
And that carries directly to the school improvement plans. Do you need to say thank you for yourself?
We'll have ten presentations, because we had four for the low performing schools a couple weeks ago. And then at the end, there's a school improvement plan that hours, literally hundreds of hours, have gone into the last year approval. We've had principals speak seven minutes. I had an alarm that'll go off with five minutes, so after you hear the alarm, you've got two minutes, and then we'll be good if we can keep that rolling. So you know where you're at on the agenda, just be ready to follow the next person who will.
Good afternoon. Okay. So Chalkmonti Primary School. Whoops. Okay, so this is us, we're at five, actually today I just checked, rep five, uh, forty-eight. That breaks down our percentage of races, thirty-one percent black, fifty percent white, thirteen percent Hispanic, and then the rest are multiracial. Pre-K through fourth. Staff of ninety-five, thirty-four of those are certified teachers. Average class size is twenty. We have full-time assistants in kindergarten, and then we share assistance in first grade. Title-one school-wide, all students receive free breakfast and lunch. This is the first year, and I've been great, really enjoying that. We have three title-one literacy specialists. Last year, well, twenty-fourteen, we were the national title-one STEAM school, and then last year, Blue Ribbon. This is our initiatives that we use. We use a balanced literacy daily. We do critical data analysis on a quarterly basis with the whole grade level and then others coming in. We also use Addie Littford, who's our regional M-class rep for the state. And then during their weekly PLCs, when they do their grade-level planning, they are looking at their data, on their progress monitoring, and discussing that and coming up with strategies for the variety of students that they serve. We do dictation in kindergarten through second grade, that's a non-negotiable, we do it every day. Dictation is applying those phonetic sounds that you're hearing with real word nonsense words and making sentences. We've really seen an improvement with that. We've been using it for six years. Actually, Nancy Fitz brought it to us when she was first in this county and was located at our school. So she trained our kindergarten teachers, and we took it up. And we've seen a big improvement with writing, using that free program, it's free, they plan it weekly. It's just the way you do it. We do guided reading daily, using the Jan Richardson model, and our reading recovery teachers train our staff annually, our teacher assistants and our pre-K staff, so they're all being consistent with their strategies. In third and fourth grade, we're doing literature circles, so guided reading looks a little bit different, because by then, you know, K-two, they're learning to read, and then they're just practicing, getting better, three, four. Writers workshop, study island, fourth grade's the only grade using that this year. Accelerated math, second, through fourth. It's a great remediation piece, it spirals, it's individualized. I can make Lisa Duke a plan for what she needs, and I can make Mr. Williams a plan for what he needs. So it's very good for individualization. We do use accelerated reader with fidelity, everybody does, first, through fourth, and we did have some kindergarten students who are doing accelerated reader if they're ready. By Christmas, we have more kindergarten students doing it. They have goals, they have to reach their goals, we celebrate their goals, and every goal is different based on the child's need. We do not have a separate time for children to read at school, this is the goal, it's based on thirty minutes of reading at home at night. So practice makes better, and that's our philosophy with that. Lexia Learning, this, actually around this time of the year, last year we purchased Lexia Learning, so we are coming up with our first whole year having it. It aligns perfectly with M-class data, the reports we can use when we have MTSS or we have data meetings, it goes right along with the same kinds of things that M-class is assessing. Again, a child takes a diagnostic test on the computer, and then it tells us how many minutes that child needs, and what, if it's aligned, what they need working. And pre-K can do that as well. Again, math is the math program we purchased last year with the math adoption, so this is the second year using it. And then Reflex Math is used as needed, K-through fourth, and that's working on math fact, basically drills them on that. Interventions, we have reading recovery for first grade, one-on-one, I have two of those, so they can start four a day. Supplemental groups, they work with second graders and first graders on supplemental groups, like they get the guided reading in the classroom, and then those, the lowest, get pulled out and get a second group. Have two, they're also, the heel wrap, they're using the, we got heel wrap years ago, and so they're still using the heel wrap that we were training to do a few years back, and they're doing that with second, third, and fourth graders. We have two EC teachers that pull out for resource services, so they're getting a core instruction in the classroom, but then getting pulled out as a double dip to work on their IEP goals. Two speech teachers and one OT. All right, this is our M-class data, this is a composite data, so this is working at your first, looking at your first sound fluency and your door fluency, and start at the bottom, that was five minutes, right, two more. So that's the bottom, sixty-seven percent were blue at the beginning of the year, and then eighty-three, and then eighty-one, so colors change, and I think y'all probably get a copy of this. This is TRC, TRC is the Text Reading Comprehension. They have to read and be able to orally retell, once you get to a level F, they have to be able to write it. That's the piece that gets them, is the writing. It's very hard, very developmental. But start at the bottom, VOY, goes up, MOY, EY, and that shows you the, we're, we have blue, there's just above where it's supposed to be, green is on track, yellow is strategic, and then red is, they're a little way away, and they need some extra work, and these look out, it gets smaller. This is our EOG results for third grade, last year, sixty-nine percent in reading, eighty-one in math, seventy-six for fourth grade, and eighty percent in math for fourth grade, and we met at second grade. And this is our new initiative. We're using PBIS, and we have implemented this year a matrix, which we didn't have before, and it's up in the schools, up in the rooms, the teachers have taught, they've taught the routines, the expectations, and we're all using that common language. So we had a planning team, and we trained everybody the first day, and we've trained the children. We have divided our school into houses. Remember I came, I think I shared with you guys about Ron Clark, how he does the houses, we've done that. We had a sorting day, and all of our children belong to either a red house, or green house, blue house, or black house, and they have names. MTSS, we're working towards that, I think everybody in our county is, it's a state initiative that we've been asked to do. The Ron Clark Model, classroom murals is something we've been working on, making your space somewhere you want to be, you work harder, because I mean, you're there most of your days, your time, that you're awake. Student engagement, if you follow us on Instagram, but you can see a lot of the magic moments that are taking place, and I've told y'all on our Instagram page. Today, they were going through dinosaur eggs and finding text features. So you never know, when you walk into our building, what you're going to see or what you're going to find. I think Mr. Williams can tell you that. People dress into the character that they're making that magic moment, and it's really cool. We're working on fourth grade, looking at their EVOs data, because we're meeting growth, but I'm getting nervous about it, because we're not exceeding, and we need to exceed grade. So we did have a big EVOs meeting there, and we're working with them, is in training on getting a better literacy model and doing some more small group there. And then First Thursday is our parent night that we started this year, we've had two. It's the first Thursday of the month, and the parents were invited, we used title-one parent bond money to feed them dinner, and we, we preload them for the curriculum that's going to be taught that month. And the big drive on that was math. You always hear from high teaching, helping with the new math strategies that Kindergarten Core has given us, so we work on those kinds of things. So parents feel comfortable and can ask questions, and it has to be engaging, so, so far, it's been two successful nights. Any questions?
Questions?
Were you getting good response to your parents?
First one was great, and the second one was great, it's just there weren't as many as the first one, so we were kind of, but we just got to sit with it, you know, and talk it up, and remind them, and call them out, you know, and like, tell your friends, this is funny, we make sure we're doing exactly what we're doing with the kids. So, I mean, I'm sure they'll have a nice moment too. I mean, Mr. Terry can speak to it, because he comes quite often, you said some great stuff.
I think you have more than crowds, and, I mean, it's just, to me, I'm always surprised at how many, yeah, take your Pizza Bingo that you had, we were going to the ride on a conference, how many showed up for that, probably?
Oh, Jim, it's full.
How much did it get? Hundred fifty, two hundred people?
Yeah, yeah. So if I could do Pizza Bingo and put some curriculum into that, I'd be hitting on something, but we'd be there all night.
And you didn't give them pizza, no?
No, they had about.
But, you know, they, I don't know, they just, they did them there, that's, and that's what it's about, involve the parents. I don't have any other questions, anybody? Very much.
Thanks, it's two. You'll hear the alarm in five minutes?
Okay.
We have two minutes left. While we're making transition, there are acronyms, and I gave you all a sheet of you. Academic world, they kind of come in and go, and do what's kind of taking place. There are four that are already.
Really?
You're going to hear the term CEP, Community Eligibility Program, and that is how we're doing the hundred percent lunch at six of our campuses, is that right, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Okay. PBIS, you probably heard, is positive behavioral intervention support, which is the matrix that we're trying to use to manage behavior. MTSS is multi-tiered system of support, and that's the interventions that we put in place for students when they're having academic or behavioral issues. And EVOs is the value-added growth data that we use to determine if a teacher's making growth or the level of growth they're making, so I just want you to understand what all those terms mean.
Lexi.
What's that?
Lexi.
Lexia?
Lexia.
Lexia. It's, it's, it's one of the programs that they use to do an assessment, to find out where the student is at, and then they plug them in on that particular grade level for the academic work they're doing.
Okay. I will be presenting the school improvement plan for the Early College. This year, our total enrollment is two-hundred-and-thirty-four students. For the past three years, we've been working on academic support intervention program to help struggling students, and you can see in grades nine, ten, and eleven, that the enrollment is much higher when compared to the twelfth and thirteenth grade, so we're very excited about the outcome that we've seen with that program. Our minority percentage is forty-five percent versus fifty-five, and we have thirty-eight percent male, sixty-two percent female. And since the school opened in two thousand and eight, this is pretty much what we see with the female-male ratio. Our free and reduced lunch population is forty-eight percent. This percentage is actually higher, but our seniors and super seniors do not choose to eat lunch on campus, they just come to school for their college classes, and then they leave after their college classes. This slide is a three-year comparison of the NC report card. It's our goal as a staff to keep the EOC proficiency at ninety percent or higher with English two, math one, and biology, and you can see that we met that goal this year. I want you to definitely look at biology proficiency. This has been an area that we've worked on for the past three years, and this past year, she scored at ninety-three. We only have one biology teacher, so when I say she, a lot rise, just on that, that one teacher. We had a hundred percent graduation rate, again, for the second year in a row, and more importantly, we exceeded growth last year, and our composite score was a ninety-two. So we've identified three initiatives at Early College. The first one is implementing cross-curricular projects, and we want to show the students or allow them to participate in a more authentic learning experience, and show them that all the content areas are connected to each other. So the PLCs are organized by grade levels, and our tenth-grade teachers came up with a murder mystery simulation that the students did last week, and they visited four stations, all the content areas. In math, they looked at Newton's Law of Cooling to determine body temperature. In science, they looked at different blood types. They were very interested in this.
Yeah.
In English, they looked at witness statements and testimonies, and they compiled all their evidence and presented to a grand jury that was made up of upperclassmen, and they were hoping to receive a new document. And to follow up with that, the next day, we had guest speakers come in from the community. We had Seth Edwards, DA, two crime scene investigators from the Sheriff's Department, and a lab technician that talked to the students and told them exactly what they experienced on a daily basis. And the feedback that we received from the students, because they all had to complete a reflection, was all positive, and they really enjoyed that project. So we've got some other ideas for this semester and next semester, and very excited and proud of the teachers and their commitment. The second initiative is personalized education. I've conducted over a hundred and twenty individual meetings with parents and students this year, and it's mainly with our tenth and eleventh grade students. The focus, the majority of our students are first-generation college students, so, you know, their parents did not experience the application process, and some of the important stepping stones that the students need in order to apply to college. So the individual meetings that we have with parents, we discuss transcripts, the high school and college transcript, we go over their GPA, and I have a sheet that shows them exactly what the colleges are looking at with GPA and ACT composite scores. We go over all the students' assessment data, and it gives the parents a way to just ask individual questions about their students' progress and what they need to be successful by the end of the program. Our third initiative is more college and career exposure. Every teacher will have two guest speakers this year come into their classrooms and talk about their profession. We have three college visits scheduled this year. We already went to NC State and Campbell in the fall, and we're taking a group of students to Wilmington in the spring. It's our goal that by the time the students graduate, that they've stepped on at least four to six college campuses in our state, both private and public. We'll take them to the private colleges that have signed the articulation agreement, meaning we will accept the college credit. Career interest assessments, exposing students to other careers that are not as popular, and they may not have heard of those professions, and job shadowing hours. Challenges at Early College, we do not have an athletic program, so a lot of the students decide not to apply as eighth graders. I do think that the percentage of our male students would increase if we were able to offer athletics, but this does, this is the number one reason why students would not apply to the Early College, is because it's not athletics. So that is a challenge. The second challenge is our enrollment cap. Last year, a hundred and sixty-five students applied, but I could only accept sixty-five students, so I'm turning away a hundred students that could be successful at the Early College. And in order to accept more students, we would need three teaching positions to accommodate the, the enrollment numbers. And cooperative and innovative high schools, which the Early College falls under, can have up to a hundred students per grade level. So if you look at the number, our total enrollment right now, we could double the enrollment if we could accept more students, and we would be able to offer more students, children in Beaufort County, the opportunity to get two years with, you know, no tuition cost. Successes at Beaufort Early College, we have added three extra curricular activities this year, Science Olympiad, Robotics, and a Greenhouse Club. This is our third year in a row that we received an A on the school report card, exceeded growth, and I mentioned earlier, a hundred percent graduation rate. We were recognized in Durham in October for achieving that. And probably the most important accomplishment this past year, eighty-one percent of our students that graduated from the Early College finished with a two-year degree. This is my final chart, but it shows the graduation, the cohorts, and the percentage of students who completed the two-year degree. And our goal is to have all students at the ninety percent or higher, but we are just very excited about our gains there. Sixty-seven was the highest the year before, and we were at eighty-one percent. Eight students did not graduate with an associate's degree, but they all graduated with at least a year and a half of college credit, so they could transfer to a four-year university right now and only have to pay two and a half years of tuition. So that's still a success story, even though they did not actually complete, you know, the two-year, but eighty percent of the students did. And that concludes my presentation.
I noticed you had a draw on your numbers on, I believe, your first slide or second slide, from ninth, from ninth grade to twelfth and thirteenth grade, is, are your classes staying consistent, or are you bringing in more students now than what you were, or are you losing students back to your original schools?
We're keeping more students than in the past. That's why you see the ninth and tenth and eleventh grade, they are much higher than the twelfth and thirteenth.
Okay.
Anytime a student transfers, and we normally have, on average, about, by the time they graduate, we'll have four, maybe five students in every cohort that move out of county, out of state, and we can never replace that spot, you know, with a student, if that's the case. And then some decide to transition back to the traditional school, but that number has decreased significantly over the last three years.
Do we have a sheet showing, I mean, getting one together to see where these two-hundred-and-thirty-four students come from, what type of schools they're in?
Yeah, that's the next thing I feel like you need to do.
We got a sheet from at least a week ago, showing all the transfers within the county, or some.
We get that too.
Asking for, but I'd, I'd like to know that myself, which, which student they come from. I hear also, I hear from people also, how many they can actually handle out there. Do we have, do we actually have any kind of a goal that we're looking at for that, as far as enrollment?
I think part of that will be communication with the community college, and then talking about, there are a lot of other issues associated with that, and it probably needs to be one of the things we discuss at the retreat in January, just long-term planning of where we need to be.
Because you know kind of where I'm headed.
Yeah.
But sixty-five was more or less the target goal from the very beginning, when the school started, it was sixty-five, that's what you were shooting for at that time.
I think that was the, that was the goal of most early colleges, but some of the early colleges have expanded in the state.
Right, but I know in the meetings we have with the community college, that's what we were looking at, sixty-five.
I'm guessing since Washington's our biggest high school, probably, that's where the most come from, but I don't think that, you think, I don't think that's the case.
I think Southside has a harsh percentage, but we can get that actual percentage today.
And that's all I'm saying, I'm not, we won't discuss it all tonight, but what we're looking at is, you know where I'm headed, you know, I roll into four fifty-nine, four hundred, is that, these accounts taking us always getting in trouble? Is that what we want? Drain, do you want to drain, continue to put drain on high schools for that, but just, just talk, let's look at that, and then we'll just talk about it from there.
Somebody's in another system in Earthland College from another county, and they transfer, they moved to Beaufort County, are they allowed any access of an application, or if you didn't start?
They are allowed.
They are allowed?
We have accepted probably total seven, five to seven.
I would think, try to be flexible with that, because when kids move, it's not their doing, it's their parents doing, so I was just curious.
And another group are the homeschool students, we always have several homeschool students that decide to apply when they're at the eighth grade level, and that's another group that we try to talk to and communicate with, to show them the options that the Early College has.
I think the Early College have been very successful, and I think we're closer right now to being where the vision was than we've ever been, but for the public, I don't want the public to think if you don't get into Early College that you can't take college courses. We've got a career and college promise program that allows a student in the, in the four-year program to earn as many as forty-four credits, semester credits, with, through the community college and those programs. So while the five-year track allows you to get the diploma and the associate's degree, there's some other options out there for students as well, and we want to make sure that people are aware of all of those.
All of our high schools offer a lot of new.
Yeah.
And Terry, one other thing, some of these students that do not get in at Beaufort Communities or the College, or our, excuse me, they go to Jamesville.
That's what I was saying, they didn't move over.
Because right now, Beaufort County's got sixty-three students over there.
It was a conversation that I.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, good job. Ms. Daniel, I think you know your up. I see you get that.
Yeah, I think, we'll see. Well, good evening. I'm here to present for Eastern Elementary, and just to give you a breakdown of some of the demographics, we have approximately six-hundred-and-fifty, as of today, two students. That is pre-K through first grade only. We have roughly ninety-two pre-K students, some of those are in our sustained and intensive classes, but otherwise, we'd be capped at ninety, so we have some of those. We have two-hundred-and-seventy-six students, which is about fifteen classes, with an average of eighteen in the class in our kindergarten, two-hundred-and-eighty-three in our first grade, and sixteen classes averages nineteen right there. Our makeup, as you can see, I didn't break it down in percentages, but I have those percentages. We have twenty-nine percent of our student population is white, forty-two percent is black, and twenty-four is Hispanic, and the remaining percentages make up our multicultural, multi-Asian, and some Native American. I'm not exactly sure how that plays in there, but that's interesting. As Dr. Fitz said, we are a CPE school, CEP school, excuse me, we are part of the Community Eligibility Program, which allows for all of our students to eat free breakfast and lunch, and we, that means we have an eighty-plus percentage of free and reduced lunch rate at our school. We have a total of ninety-five faculty members, that's including fifty-four certified staff and forty-one classified staff at, at the school. When we look at accountability, it's an interesting dynamic for an accountability program at a pre-K one school, because we don't have an EOG, which the state obviously has, that's where they recognize a lot of growth and development, but we also are required to do the M-class, which is part of the accountability model for EVOs data. You can see, when you look at for the past two years, that have been able to, they've calculated that, in our first grade, they go from fall to spring, they look at the benchmark for M-class, and, and this is only looking at your text reading comprehension, which is the reading component. In the first year that we had, we, and B is, go back to the colors that Ms. Vosberg has, it's blue, meaning you're exceeding growth by the, by standard growth measures based on EVOs. G is green, that means you've met those standard growth, and then of course, R is red, which means you're below those standard growth models. So when you look at first grade, the, we are meeting that or exceeding that, and in kindergarten, because they do, the state does not take the beginning of the year data, because they figure it skews it, because of all our children pretty much come in at a baseline of low-performing as a whole. So they take our winter data, which is coming up after the break, our MOY, our mid-year data, and go to the end of the year, and they base our growth on that. And so our kindergarten is exceeding growth in those areas, so they are working on that, which is exciting for our teachers, and our teachers are, are in that model as well. When we look at initiatives, what we're looking at focusing on for the next, for, and you'll see it in our school improvement plan, is looking at focusing on career education. We have always done the big career on wheels, people know it as Cow Day, but we've really looked at wanting to expand that to more than just the bucket truck and the fire truck, which our students absolutely love, and is absolutely appropriate. But we also are looking at, the counselor's looking at expanding that into looking at other careers. She looked at having the Red Cross come in this year, however, with the storm, they couldn't make it. So she pulled Ms. Harris, my assistant principal, and I to do a session, to talk about what do principals do, and that was an interesting conversation with five. do principals do, and that was an interesting conversation with five and six-year-olds asking what we do. And so we, we deal with everybody who's bad, that's pretty much what their philosophy was, or they're identifying. Professional learning communities is working with our teams, our, the school is set up in pods, I'm sure many of you know, and they are four-member teams, and they're grade-level organized, we have a data meeting teams that we're working with. This year, we're working on having a two-hour block of time to be really dig in deep, and have them look at what, those focus skills that need to be addressed. In kindergarten, primarily the first half of the year, we look at focusing on those early skills, we call them dibbles, that's your first sound fluency, those are your letter naming, those are your phoneme segmentation, all the skills you need to be good readers, because without that, it's kind of hard to do anything else. PBIS, as you heard, we are part of that initiative, we do have the conscious discipline, which is the theory that we use in the framework of PBIS. The Harmony Program is something that Mr. Doan sent out to different principals and counselors, and it is, fits right in with it, we had teachers go to the free training they had, it's free, you know, so anything that's free, we love. So this is great, and we're looking at how to make this even a better part of our PBIS Also, we, we're looking at having quarterly parent meetings combining now, we have, and you'll see that as part of our celebration, is having a place to have these meetings now. So having the curriculum exploration with grade levels, also cultural arts, and having performances from the, from music to art. Planbook.com is something we're using this year, so teams can share their plans within each other, each team member can focus on a particular area and share that with their team. Also, it enables myself and my, my assistant principal to review those plans and make comments on them. Challenges we face, obviously, we are a very open campus, and that is, security is one of the main things that, you know, we have, I know those are things that are going to be addressed, but that is one of our major challenges. Improving parent involvement to the point where they are no longer looking at us as, as a place to just have their children, but to really understand that it's important that attendance is important, all day long, not just part of the day. And of course, our major challenge this year was a reduction of our staff, we lost classified staff, and we've had bus driver shortages, which have put a lot of our classified staff doing double duty a lot, and so that has really had an impact on ours. Celebrating, we are so fortunate and blessed to be able to partner with a lot of the community. One of the things we partner with is Washington High School for our teacher cadets, they are a major part of what we do, and they are a great asset to our school. Our GG program, grandparents are great, or grownups are great, we've kind of changed that a little bit. Community volunteers, our staff, I have to say, we have a very committed staff, we have a very stable staff right now. And like I said, the gym, how wonderful, you can see the pictures of the kids playing in the gym, our enclosed area, and it was really nice this morning, because it was nice and warm, and warm bathrooms. And of course, our partnership with Viden and the Chamber to help make the movie night happen, that has been a great, great success. We've had different, and we look forward to doing that at least twice a year, and thanks for the partnership too, with Mr. Oliver there to help out as well. And we've also had a Lowe's grant of fifteen hundred dollars, which they came in and were able to redo our butterfly garden and one of the other garden areas. So those are, that's Eastern, and there's Buddy.
Can you grab a sheet? Vent bathroom, those are, did feel good this morning.
Yes, it did, it was very nice, it was nice to walk past those vents and then have that warm air be blowing out, and everybody wasn't able to do that.
If you haven't had a chance to take a look at this, well, we're in time, just.
Oh yes, come on by.
He's really nice in January, he's good morning.
Yes, it will.
It'd be really nice if we had all those different pods that were scattered all over everywhere, connected.
If that's all you're planning, if that's all you're planning for the future.
No, I didn't say that.
I'm for that.
I have no idea how you connect that. Yeah, I know how to connect one up with a camera. Okay, I take it that this will happen, so.
He is not here, so I am gonna take over for him, and hopefully he'll be back in the building sometime soon, so. So, we can start with our profile, which, okay, we have about five hundred and eighty-five students at Bath, eighty-five percent are white, eight percent are Hispanic, and four percent multi, and three percent are black students. Basically, that, we do not have a diverse population at Bath, but we look to pull more of that diversity into Bath. We're looking at exposing the students to more things, like through our curriculum fair, our career fairs, and some assemblies that we are planning to do in the future. Teacher profiles, we have about two probationary teachers right now, but the majority of our teachers are veteran teachers, seventy-eight percent are veteran teachers, so we have a lot of knowledge at Bath. We have advanced degrees, thirty-seven percent, and we have about eight, we have, actually, that's wrong, we have now nine National Board certified teachers. Free and reduced lunch, we have fifty-four, fifty-four percent, thirty-two percent is free, and actually, four point two percent is reduced, and sixty-three percent is, they're paid. Continuity of teaching and learning in K-8 schools, we have, like I said, we have a, we have a group of veteran teachers, we have those that are all-star teachers in reading, math, and EC that we pull from for variety of areas. When we're looking at our data meetings, our PLCs, our MTSS meetings, those are the teachers that we're pulling from. Parental and community support, we, we are involved with Backpack Pals, we have about twenty-three families and thirty-seven children that we send backpacks home with each week. And our school and faith-based organizations also, we pull from those resources for our kids during the holidays, during special times of the year, so those students aren't left out. Veterans Day program is a yearly program that we put on, it has started in nineteen ninety-one, and has continued, so that's been over twenty-five years that we have had our Veterans Day program. Our PTO does a wonderful job in supporting our staff, every, a lot of those, a lot of the teacher requests are field, they don't give a dollar amount, but a lot of those are field. PTO gives to our technology fund each year, they also give to our field trips, give for our field trips, so that our drivers are paid. Our fundraiser this year, we usually have pretty much the same fundraisers, but this year, we've included a fundraiser called Student Store, and I don't know if a lot of, a lot of administrators know about this, is, but we, School Store, you, is an online fundraiser, there's no money involved, we don't have to take up any money or anything like that. Basically, you go through this schoolstore.com, dot com, and you purchase, let's just say your school shopping, for school shopping, your Christmas shopping for the year, the school gets a percentage of the, of the purchase. Also, through School Store, parents can give gift cards to classroom teachers, and that goes straight to the classroom teacher, and they can go onto schoolstore.com and purchase things for their classroom. Our Booster Club also helps as well for athletics, anything that, make sure that all of their needs are met as well. Bath's elementary school strengths, experienced and stable faculty with staff camaraderie. Our teachers leaders again, that we have around a six-point-four turnover rate, in which, when teachers come to Bath, they stay at Bath, and we usually get emails and calls asking, okay, are there any positions open? So usually, when they're at Bath, they stay. We have our Sunshine Committee, we use for teacher appreciation, we use for those families that are, have death in the family, communication and collaboration, we make sure that we meet each month during various things, for PLCs, for MTSS, for data meetings, to make sure we are communicating and collaborating. Twenty-first century learning tools and skills, authentic learning opportunities, we have our Career Fair each year, last year we had the Career Fair, it was called, the theme was Career Fair on Wheels, so basically, we had the dump trucks come out, all of those, the log trucks, all of those type of careers came out for four-eight, and four through eight, and so they say, they had a wonderful time during the Career Fair. This year, the focus is gonna be K-three, and so four-eight will not get a chance, so we switch each year for each, for grade levels. We also have field trips, special grade level projects, I know fifth grade, they, they have a science, not science, but a state, state project that they do each year, and this year, we've added cyber robotics. Also, last year, we added the Drama Club, and we had our first musical called At the Bandstand, and we had our NPR room packed with parent and community support. Also, our culture of caring and civic responsibility, we have our character education, we've had, so far this year, we've had two winners that come that, for responsibility and courage. We've had our canned food drive each year, our Toys for Tots, our Blood Mobile, our community fundraisers, Relay for Life, I know last year, we raised about five thousand dollars for Relay for Life. Also, I wanted to add band to this slide, band did really well last year, we partner with Northeast, we split our band that way, they had a competition last year where they scored a superior during their competition, so we were so excited for them. And also, this year, we would like to add a Student Appreciation Day in May, sort of like a field day, but we've never had that before at Bath, so that could be, we wanted to add that for our students. Some challenges that we face, in which everybody understands this, and I'm sure everyone will have this a part of their slide, shrinking human and financial resources. Everybody is going through this right now, we are, we're gonna do the best we can, and we're gonna meet the needs of our students, so. Student safety, our campus access, accessibility, I can't say that, but I know Ms. Dana talked a little bit about her campus, and we have about six buildings on our campus, and that's a struggle of ours, that we have easy access on our campus. Something that we have changed this year with student safety is that our PM car rider issue, there was a lot of concern with kids running back and forth during the car rider line, and so we made that change where parents would have to pick up kids by the buses, so that has improved. Tremendous number of required student assessments, we do have that, but we did receive iReady this year, and our staff is excited about iReady. It is, it is something that K-8, that is a common assessment, that everyone could look at and pull from those, pull from that assessment. It is not subjective, like our TRC, and so everyone is excited about that, and hopefully we will get some good, some good data from that assessment. Complex family dynamics creates barriers, each year, families change, so we, we're just gonna try to meet the needs as we can, step-parents and all of that, so we're gonna just try to meet their needs as best as we can. Effective interventions and growth on EOGs for all students, that's just a continuous cycle. Each nine weeks, we're gonna work and try to make sure that, we are trying to meet the needs of each student, are we, we're continually asking that question, are we doing what we can to effectively meet our, our subgroups, like our black students, our students with disabilities, our LEP kids, are we doing enough? Our celebrations, we met one hundred percent of our sixteen AMOs targets for, last year, to meet the NCLB requirements, we've met growth on our EOGs with a one percent growth index, our total proficiency continues to improve, BES is above state average, and our, we continue to focus on technology and making sure that we are getting our Chromebooks each year. So that ends my presentation, I hope I didn't take too long.
Any questions?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Kelly, when the alarm goes off, you have two minutes left, okay?
Okay.
You have a total of seven.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Begpie, the new principal at John Small, this is my assistant principal, Andrew Ditlofsen, we're the new leadership team at John Small Elementary School. Here's our school profile, we have approximately five hundred and sixty-five students enrolled, seventy-nine of our students are EC students, eighty-two of our students are actually AIG students under the new criteria, we have fifteen LEP students, and three hundred and sixteen, or fifty-six percent of our students are eligible for free or reduced lunch, however, we do fall under the, as a CEP school, so our school does receive free breakfast and lunch. About thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent of our students are black, thirty-four percent are white, point seven, almost, four students are Asian, twenty-two point six are Hispanic, we have two.
We have two American Indians, 22 are multiracial and one native Hawaiian Pacific. What I didn't add in that slide is we have 38 certified teachers and five teacher assistants. I just wanted to take time, I don't know, can you hear me since I'm standing away from the mic, to really highlight the hard work that the John Small staff has put in. This is not under my leadership, but as you see this data over three years, they really deserve an applause. Just looking at the percentages and how much they have grown, fourth grade language arts has grown 7.6%. Fourth grade math, 17.4%. Fifth grade language arts, 18.2%. Fifth grade math is 23.3%. Fifth grade science is 25%. And overall proficiency over the last three years is 16%. If you can see at the very bottom, the growth index, in 2013, 14, they were at negative 11.1, not meeting growth. In 2014 and 15, they were at negative 5.73, again, not meeting. And last year, they met exceeded growth, bringing their total growth index over three years, positive 12.41. So that is really something that they needed to be, they need to be applauded for because that is a lot of hard work that they put in. Again, not under my leadership, so I've got a lot of work sustaining that growth and continuing that growth. Looking at our subgroups, we are really trying to close the gap. Our black students are up 19% over three years. Hispanics are up 18.3%. Multiracial, and I think this is, has to do with the varying numbers over the three years, they're up 3.8%. White students are up 17.1%. Our economically disadvantaged are up 22%. Our LEP students are up 9% and students with disabilities up 15%. Our subgroups are reaching these through, are reaching these high levels of achievement through some different initiatives we have. We have a transition classroom, actually, we have three transition classrooms, which is a three-four classroom. They are self-contained and they're the students that did not pass the RTA in third grade. I think this is an actual, actually a great setup for them because they're not switching classes and they're really focusing on reading. They're getting small group instruction and the class sizes, where our normal class sizes are about 22 to 25 students, their class sizes are 15 and 16. So they're getting more one-on-one attention with the teacher. We've got wise guys, which is for our AIG students, it's a 45-minute class period that they get every single day for our AIG students and we've got a phenomenal AIG teacher, Ms. Bryant. We offer the inclusion model for our EC students, which is a co-teaching model where students are in a regular, EC students are in a regular ed classroom with a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher. We have three Hill Rat teachers that pull a total of 72 students every day. And so 72 students on top of their small group instruction in the classroom are getting 45 more minutes of specialized phonics instruction. We also have LEP pullouts. Again, we have an amazing ESL teacher, Ms. Rodman. We offer the Cornerstone After School Program that we have partnered with the Cornerstone Church. And we, this year, we also have iReady, which is an individualized software program. It's an adaptive diagnostic, so it really helps students fill in the gaps where they're the weakest. Some of JSS achievements, they met expected growth this year with 1.31 growth index. We exited low performing status, which everybody was so excited about. Based on growth and proficiency data, we went from D to a C school. We grew in all areas and subgroups, meeting 21 of 21 targets. Our Battle of the Books team placed third in the district last year. And that brings us to the big question. We're a new team, how do we continue to grow? We have implemented some new things this year. We require weekly planning with the content teams, that is every Wednesday. I told the teachers, do not make appointments on Wednesdays. We are planning on Wednesday afternoons. Mr. D and I go to these planning meetings to ensure that they happen and that they're discussing, discussing the content and data. Our teachers give bi-weekly common assessments that they bring the data to these meetings and they drive their instruction based on the results from these assessments. Lesson plans that are focused on research-based curriculum and data-driven and posted each week to the shared drive. We have monthly committee, department and grade level meetings, monthly county-wide professional development, which my teachers have really enjoyed. They enjoyed it last year. They feel a lot of their success came from the PD from, provided from the county. We also have DPI and county instructional coach support that are in our schools and they're constantly helping us. Our PDPs are aligned with our school goals this year. All staff members are a member of a committee and they are accountable for the school improvement plan. So it's not just the school improvement team that's accountable for our, for our plan, it is the whole staff. Again, we also have three reading remediation teachers that, I mean, pulling 72 kids every day. We're really, really excited about that. Some structured changes that have happened this year. When I met with the teachers this summer before I came in as the new principal, I asked them, what are some things you'd like me to change? And they really wanted me to try to give them uninterrupted instructional time. So I was actually able to make a master schedule that allowed for three 90-minute uninterrupted instructional blocks. And they really feel like that has made a big difference. Kids aren't being pulled out all the time. They're not broken up to go to specials. I've also been able to give them a 45-minute enrichment or remediation block during this time. This is when LEP kids are pulled, AIG kids are pulled, Hill Rat kids are pulled. It's a time that any pullouts happen, so they're not pulled from any core subject. And also, teachers are assigned to teach only one core subject this year, allowing for mastery of content and allowing them to focus on one subject. We're asking teachers to do more and more and by allowing them to focus on one subject really allows for them to be masters and experts in that area. Some new initiatives at John Small. We have adopted Engage New York math curriculum and I really, I invite you all to come out and just come see a math class. It is a new way of teaching. I sit in, when I walk into a math class, I end up staying for the whole 90 minutes. I want to learn math all over again. It is high-paced, it's high engagement and I just, I would love to see you guys out just to see what's happening in math. We have small guided reading group instruction that is just starting. PBIS is one of our new initiatives. Reading Counts is a new web-based, web-based reading program. It is like AR, but they can actually take the tests at home. Again, we have iReady, we have a STEM task team, we have standard lesson plan template and small group sessions to address social issues. We call that Peacemakers and that's run by our guidance counselor and our ISS teacher. And this is just, I'll let Mr. D talk about PBIS. I know I'm running out of time, so I'm talking really fast, but go ahead.
PBIS, in case you didn't know, is our framework for dealing with student behavior. The biggest thing that I can probably say about PBIS, it's a proactive approach to handling student behavior. One thing that Mrs. Makepeace and I both agree on is that good instruction goes hand-in-hand with good classroom management and dealing with student behavior. We're not exactly starting from scratch with PBIS at John Small this year. I'd kind of look at it like rebooting PBIS. So one of the things that we did is we got our PBIS team assembled probably mid-August. We came together and looked at coming up with a new framework for student expectations and consequences and then taking this framework and rolling it out to the staff on our first opening meeting and doing some in-house professional development. The in-house professional development on classroom management and dealing with student behavior has been an ongoing thing as well that at every staff meeting, we're talking about it. And instead of having it as something that we deal, deal with or talk about at the beginning of the year, it's always at the forefront of our conversations in grade level meetings, staff meetings, what else did I say? We're also getting some, I should call it like incentives or positive kind of.
The teachers are enjoying it because we're, it's, we're rewarding their hard work.
So, okay, so PBIS, another piece of the puzzle is acknowledging the positive behavior. We're not just doing that with students, we're doing that with the staff as well, which has been pretty fun, too.
I know we're running out of time. Some clubs and initiatives, we have Yearbook Club for the kids, Math Club Lego Robotics, Battle of the Books, Chorus, Right Flight and the After School Program. Challenges at John Small, I did not put, what I want to talk about first is I did not put up, put this up here because I did not want to take away from any of the hard-working staff that I have, but we lost 12 teachers last year, six moved to different schools, some moved, some retired, some moved to leadership positions. So I brought in 11 new teachers. So that is a lot of teachers to kind of get on board and teach the, learning the new curriculum. None of them are brand-new teachers, but it's new curriculum for them. They're phenomenal teachers, but this is a year that they're learning the new curriculum. Other challenges are outdated instructional resources. I've had to spend $10,000 in leveled readers, 3,500 just so I can have some social studies resources, 3,500 on the reading counts, 10,000 on the iReady instructional program. That was what John Small had to pay, $10,000 that I took as a textbook waiver just for, to support the needs of the new Engage New York math curriculum. Also, technology, there's, we haven't had a budget to replace or repair technology. Our smartboards are old and they're, the light bulbs are blowing and the bulbs are $350. The laptops are old themselves, they're at two hours max, they can run for about two hours max and then we got to plug them in. And then there were old computers that they pulled out and so that ended up leaving our classrooms with two to three computers apiece. Computer, our community partnerships, we've got Cornerstone Worship Center, Eagle Wings with Backpack Pals and Bright Teachers Committee has been wonderful to us. And, sorry, I talked so fast at the end, but I know you guys are sick of seeing me. And then I, I added this at the end because we have a, an extremely caring and passionate staff and this is what one of the staff members made, this is what you'll see when you walk into our front office. When you enter this loving school, consider yourself one of the special members of an extraordinary family. And that's what we really try to do is build our community and extend the culture in our school. Any questions?
Any questions? None? I guess not.
Okay.
So I guess you covered your bases. At this, I just want to mention, at this time, I was asked to give a 10-minute break. Is that still, is that still on? Okay, then I, I mean, we're right on schedule, three minutes off. So I guess we'll take, I tell you what, let's make it 6:10 when we back.
Well, we're good, we're back in session.
She's back in session.
And you're up.
All right, all right. Good evening, Tracy Nixon, Principal of PS Jones. I'm going to start with my demographics. I have 772 students, that's way down. When I started PS Jones 17 years ago, we were at 1,100. So as you can tell, that number's dropped. I've got 270 in my sixth, 250 in my seventh and 252 in my eighth. Race is 41% white, Hispanic 18%, black 38% and multi-3%. I'm up to 72% on free and reduced lunch, that's up from last year from 68%. When you look at my testing data, we had growth in proficiency all across the board with the exception of seventh grade math, we went down this year. But you can see the reading and math went up in all grade levels. The only one we're struggling with proficiency is math, seventh grade. That went down. We had a new team, first-year teacher, some changes, two teachers were out, they had some deaths in the family, but I expect that number to go up this year. Eighth grade science came up as well and math one was at 90.9% and we, overall growth, we exceeded growth. The challenges we face at PS Jones is the teacher retention, retaining highly qualified teachers. It's becoming more and more difficult, the candidates just aren't out there. At the end of last school year, we lost a total of 10 teachers, one nurse and two administrators. Four people retired, two left Beaufort County for Pitt County because they paid more money. One left for Hyde County because it was closer to home, she lives in Pantega. Two moved out of state, one moved to a principal position and one assistant principal position transferred to CMS and one teacher is a principal fellow candidate. And then our school nurse moved to Rocky Mountain to be closer to her mom. That was a lot of positions to fill, less than last year, but it was still a lot to fill and I feel like we need some more incentives to keep teachers employed with Beaufort County Schools. Class size, PS Jones lost three positions, social studies, science and eighth grade math, and I want to clarify that we lost the positions because of the numbers. The state says you have to have a certain amount because our numbers decreased, we lost those three positions. The problem with that is I know the state says we don't need them because of the numbers, but it did raise our class size tremendously in those particular classes. I'd like to have those positions back, but I know that that's, it's based off state funding and I know that. But if you look at my discipline data, that's where I'm having a lot of issues just based on numbers. When you put kids 30-plus in a class, that's what happens. Lack of resources, we have a limited number of resources because we don't have Title I funding. It limits us in hiring much-needed tutors, purchasing supplemental resources, updating textbooks, purchasing additional technology and software programs to enhance student learning, parental involvement. It's hard to keep parents involved at the middle school level. We're constantly creating ways to communicate and seek input from our parents. We need our parents to join and assist us in their child's education. Part of that, I think, has a lot to do with, there's five transitions in Washington and we're the fourth stop and they're just tired. They're tired and they look at middle schoolers as, we're going to let them do their own thing, which is not really how to look at that. Again, we'd like to have Title I funding, that would help us bring some parents out. If you feed them, they will come. Our greatest accomplishments at PS Jones is we exceeded growth overall as a school. We were only one of three schools that, that grew. We have 3.84 growth. We grew in all subject areas with the exception of seventh grade math. Najah Pope was nominated for the Victor Bell Scholarship. Brayton Davenport was nominated and won a $1,000 scholarship to UNCG Science and Art Technology Camp. Bryce Ingram was nominated for the Carson Scholarship and the Battle of the Books came in first place for the district and second place for the regions. There were 129 students inducted into the National Junior Honor Society, 99 seventh graders and 38 graders, there are a total of 109, 99 members overall. This year, our numbers are increasing. I just took a look at them and it looked like they were going to be close to 300. Some of that has to do with the grading scale change, but it's still a large number. There were 88 Presidential Awards for Academic Excellence and there were 17 seventh graders who qualified for DTIP and six of them took the SAT. All right, our non-academic achievements, PBI State Recognition, we won the Green Ribbon Award. We're the only Beaufort County school to receive this award. There were 61 eighth-grade students, five teachers and seven parents who traveled to Washington DC for our eighth-grade tour to DC, the nation's capital, and learned about important historical events. That's a really good trip. I attended, the students had a blast. PS Jones Newsletter created a place at One Line for students and parents. We do that every nine weeks to keep them informed of the school events and achievements. Wow. 116 student nominations for character education, 10 students nominated by our school counselors to participate in the National Youth Conference. And PS Jones Digital Art and STEM classrooms are fully up and running. Builders Club, it's a middle school version of Kiwanis Club, is up and running. We're involved in a lot of things, lobster sales, canned food drive for Eagle Wings, Rue's House and Christmas Parade and we visit the Ridgewood Nursing Home and we volunteer at Eagle Wings. Academic achievement, these are just some pictures, Washington DC and student leadership. Our discipline data, if you look at PBIS, we're trying to reduce the numbers. This is working. The past three years, ISS has decreased by 35% and OSS has decreased by 21%. New initiatives, we're doing Engage New York across the grade levels for math. All math teachers and students will be utilizing this new curriculum material to help increase test scores and provide more rigor and challenge in the math classrooms. We've added an additional coach for volleyball, we have enough for A-team and B-team. We've added an additional coach for cross-country to have a boys and girls team. The Running Club is for sixth graders because they can't compete. The Running Club is for 6th graders because they can't compete. Weekly subject planning PLCs, track student data, analyze testing scores, and drive instruction. The concession stand is up and running, looks great. Sidewalks, we're constructing the carpool lane so nobody can get their feeties dirty anymore or wet. The STEM Task Force, Ms. Whitehead and Ms. D are working with all PS Jones science teachers to implement learning baskets to engage regular students in science learning. And we've implemented a literacy program for low-level readers. We're partnering with the community, One School, One Books, and it's final year, we don't have to collect any more money. Oops, go back, sorry. Relay for Life, we had the largest staff participation, we were awarded first place for campsite, and we raised $2,500. Eagle Wings Food Pantry, Builders Club assists with that, we had 80 members who assist with charitable work and contributions throughout the community. We have Cornerstone Worship Center, we offer that after-school, Monday through Thursday. We have 45 this year, and we're working with students on iReady to improve math and reading scores. Backpack Pals, we partner with Eagle Wings and provide that every week. Christmas Village Toy Store, we participate by inviting 10 of our lower-income families to purchase holiday items at 80% off. Bright Futures meets once a month, great program, we've done a Men of Success, we also initiated a Women of Success, which was partnered with St. Peter's. BB Chapel provides book bags and school supplies throughout the year, and West Chapel provides snacks and student supplies. Beaufort Community College, 8th grade tours offered to our students, and we're also doing STEM with our pile. And Career Day at November 18th was wonderful, we had over 42 guest speakers and presenters. Okay, thank you for listening, any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I tried to go really fast.
Can anybody quiet?
I have a question.
Okay.
In your professional opinion, if you could change, add, or take away one thing at your school that you think would have a major impact, what do you think that would be?
Change, add, or take away?
Something that you wish you didn't have to do, something you wish you could do, curriculum, staff, what do you think would have a greater impact?
I have lots and more. I don't, really, I would, to be honest with you, I'd like to be added as Title I. To me, that would make, we stand to gain a lot of money, and I could use it for resources. It would change our world if we had that. We've had it before, I know it's a lot of work, but we just don't have any resources in programs because we're not Title I, we don't have any money to purchase those things. And I know the money needs to be spent in the lower levels, but it would be nice if the middle-school had it to, I mean, we don't, you know, when you send out things about what programs or where you're gonna take away, we don't have any to take away. And so I'd like the Title I to get some of those funds to purchase materials and have it to coaches. It would be nice if we had some literacy coaches. I mean, we utilize what the district has, but actually having that school would be phenomenal in reading and math. Any more questions?
Yes, no?
Have a great night.
Thank you for coming by. Mr. Clark, I see you rising in the back, so I guess you look at the agenda, though you're next. Thank you.
And I'll put me on a stopwatch.
All right.
So as you know, I'm Mark Clint, Scales Principal Northeast, and, wait, kind of, just first thing I want to say, thank you guys for what you do. Kind of butter you up for a second here, and say, you guys have a thankless job, and regardless of the decisions you make and the things that you do, there's never enough thank you. So I appreciate what you do if nobody else does, how about that? All right, so here's our demographics. Oh, I try. 485 kids, and we're very similar to PS Jones in that we're losing kids. And it's simple math, and I'll mention it a couple times in here, if you look at kindergarten at 48, first grade at 46, second grade at 47, so those are our three incoming groups. The exiting groups that I sent to Mr. Clark were in the 60s. So you're talking about 61, 62, 63, so you're almost losing between 15 and 20 kids a year the last three years. And the impact that that's had, especially at the teacher level with staff, we've lost staff not only as TAs, but in the classroom, and that's a big impact of what we have. You can see that after this year, when this next 8th grade group leaves at 56, we'll kind of maybe level off for a couple years, and hopefully that'll hold us where we are. Demographically, we're 51% white, 27% black, 18% Hispanic. You know, it's always kind of interesting to look at that number when somebody just asks you right off the top of the bat, what are you looking at? What are your demographics at your school? So those are the numbers we see. Free and reduced lunch, we're 75%. So kind of wrapping your brain around that, that's only one out of every four kids that walks through the door does not qualify for free and reduced lunch. We have five nationally board-certified teachers, we lost one with retirement, so those are the quick ones. All right, what I try to do with accountability is just hit some of the highlights, because we've got, you know, with being from 3rd through 8th tested and other grades in between doing things. So 3rd and 4th grade math, the last two years, we've been doing Engage New York, which you heard Ms. Nixon say, I think it's fantastic. It just changes your whole mindset and thinking on the way you solve math problems, and the why to that you're doing that. And that has certainly what we've seen in 3rd grade, and then in 4th grade, 64.9, 67.2, both of those are up from 52%. They were exactly the same there in both years, so we're going up there. Our 5th grade, Language Arts, 5th grade is always a tough year, I mean, across the board. You look across the county, everybody's 5th grade struggles, at least it's a down, it's a dip in the trough. And ours is actually starting to trend in the right direction. ELA, we're at 50%, that was up from 35.5 just a couple of years ago. The achievement gap, you always hear about the achievement gap between black students and white students. In looking at all of our data, probably the best thing that I found there was in science, so in 5th and 8th grade science, which is a pretty, I don't want to say easy test, but it's a good, it's a fair test, how about that? Kids usually do pretty well on. 61% of our black students were proficient, 88.7% of our white students. So the gap there is 27.7 points. Well, the gap has closed, it's shrunk from about 34.2, I think was the number that it has. So you can see that that gap's starting to close in that particular subject area. For M-class, for Reading 3D M-class, TRC in grades kindergarten through 3rd grade, the overall composite score is 65%. Now, that should translate, then, when we look at our reading EOG numbers, they should kind of translate and be equal. So if they're 65% proficient there or on-grade level, then it should translate to EOG numbers. And so hopefully we can get that trend to continue as they go into the more tested areas. Our total EOG composite, which is if you take math, language arts, math 1, everything, science across the board, is 51.3%. And then you can see that we met expected growth, really hoping to exceed it, but we met it. And that's a goal that I've got and that everybody wants to have there, is to exceed growth is what we're looking for. All right, so initiatives, things that we're working on. So I tried to break this into academic, and then community, and then discipline. So the focus on literacy, we did have a slight drop in our literacy proficiency numbers. So what we're trying to do, and this is on a lot of PDP goals for teachers, is to work on a school-wide literacy case study. We're using Jennifer Cervalo's book, The Reading Strategies Book, and every teacher is gonna select an individual student, whether it's somebody they teach or somebody that they relate to, and then they use the book to find a strategy that they're looking to do. Wow, that's fast. And so they're working with individual students on those strategies. You can see our professional development, wanted to give a shout-out to Elizabeth Fortescue and Autumn Wallace, who've done a lot of our professional development for teachers. So kind of handed that over to teachers and say, hey, you guys find out what they need and what they want. So they've done a great job with that. PLCs continue, using the Common Pacing Guides, common assessments that we're looking at for like subjects and grades, using iReady, I like iReady, I like the diagnostic piece, I like the data that you get for both reading and math, and then continuing to look at growth on both levels. At the community level, what we're trying to do, continue to work with Bright Futures, and we're trying to really kind of streamline it to get three things out of it. Community partnerships for grade levels, get somebody in the community, whether it's a church or community member involved. We want to meet individual student needs. When we meet next week, we're gonna look at particular Christmas needs, needs now before Christmas. And then unfinished business from last year, in particular, an ESL class that Liz Shinahara had started with the community college, to do parents to have an ESL class at night, to have them come in and do that. MTSS and PBIS are, you know, kind of the discipline things that we put in. PBIS is very positive, more so teaching what to do instead of teaching kids what not to do, and then meeting the social skills. All right, so challenges. Elementary mental health issues, this is just what we spend a lot of our time on. There's some kids that have some pretty significant needs, and we're trying to do the delicate balance of meeting their needs and then looking at what they need to be academically proficient. And it's so hard because those behaviors get in the way. I mean, you're dealing with behaviors that we're just not equipped to deal with. So we have to balance their needs, but we have to keep everybody safe in the building is what we're working with. We talked about the decrease in enrollment. Staff morale, you've heard about it, when you lose teachers, you lose positions, TAs, it increases the number of kids in the classroom, it makes it difficult academically and also behaviorally when you're looking at that. And then with PBIS, one of the things with discipline is you're trying to teach what to do, and a lot of times you have limited options on what to do if they get in trouble. So trying to get buy-in to all of that. This is the matrix that we use with PBIS, and it talks about as far as ROR being the acronym for being responsible, being organized, being accountable, and then being respectful. And then across the top is what we expect, and what we're teaching them to do in each of those different locations. So again, we're trying to continue to get our students to grow across the board. I think we've got one of the most caring staff and communities around. The school leadership team, the sit team, that's been doing a lot of work for us, Dana Baker and Paula Sherman have done amazing jobs, and they're guiding so much of our decisions that we're making here. And I just, I feel like we're the best-kept secret around. You ride down 20, whatever miles, 22 miles down the road, and you're gonna find something special. So, there you are.
Any questions, Clark? I don't know what's wrong with you, I thought I was getting questions, it's a pretty quiet group.
Nowhere to find me.
They're coming very prepared.
There you go. If you ever need something, let me know.
Thank you, I appreciate it a whole lot. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Welcome, ladies, just in time. Tell me when you're ready. Go. John Cotton Taylor. Here we go. Come on here, Lisa. All right? All right, demographics right here, 549, everybody stood up before you and said their numbers are decreasing, ours are as well. You can look at the demographics as far as racial makeup, we're down to 30% white, lower than that in 2nd grade, black 43, Hispanic. I'll tell you each time I come, in 99, that school had 1% Hispanic, now we have 23% Hispanic, 4% multiracial, 100% with the free and reduced lunch. Wanted to point out, we have 13% of our students receiving DC services. Students with limited English proficient is 20% of those students. What do you say? Here we go, there we go. All right, here's some of the initiatives that we've undertaken, and trying to get through this stuff quickly. Instructional teams, you realize everybody at Taylor is either a 2nd grade teacher or a 3rd grade teacher. So you've got 15 2nd grades, 14 3rd grades. That lends itself to having teams, those teams prepare for everybody in school, and therefore we save everything, put it on a drive, so everybody has opportunity to look at that stuff. The PBIS has been mentioned, MTSS has been mentioned, communication with parents, we try to send stuff home weekly, and we've got an informational, I mean, an informal walkthrough thing. Here's a Power Hour, I introduced that to you last year, and I explained during the Power Hour that we pull out every kid in a team. Roughly, we have five 2nd grade teachers on a team, and then when we go into 3rd grade, we do something similar. But I'm gonna go ahead and flip to this Power Hour. And there's a Power Hour that works its way yellow five times, six times a day. And during that Power Hour, if five of you board members were a team, at that particular Power Hour, everybody in your class that received ESL, which was the English and second language, gets up, goes to that teacher. Every EC kid goes to that. Every kid who's a struggling reader goes to those two teachers. Everybody who's an advanced kid goes to that AG class. So in essence, out of those 100 kids, 50 of them are in an alternate site, and that leaves 50 for those five teachers to work in small groups with kids that are very similar to each other kids sitting in that classroom. So that's Power Hour. Well, you always, when you come about doing something like this, you want to know, has it been successful? Well, here's our, I would like to think our proof. Once again, Taylor's had a pretty good history of exceeding expected growth each year with our testing program. Here's one of the other things that we'll talk about. Once I mentioned about everybody being in the same group planning, and then it's placed on a Google Drive so everybody has access. Everything at Taylor is shared. If you come there to be the star, you're not gonna be there alone, because you're gonna come there and be a team player, or you're gonna go to one of the other schools. We're not looking for, you know, Hollywood movie stars, we're looking for people to come in there and work as a team and be something. Here's some of the test scores. This is the ESL program, that's where these Hispanic kids come, they don't have the proficiency skills to work the way we would like them, so we get them, we get them into that class with that teacher an hour a day. When I introduce Power Hour to you, remember I came to you and I said those kids had a limited number of minutes before we went to Power Hour. Every one of those kids, every day in that class. Did it work? Look here and see. 2nd grade, the goal was 60% of those kids would show growth. Well, here's the performance. 2nd grade, 73% of those kids showed growth, and 3rd grade, 91% of those Hispanic kids showed growth. When you look at goal two, you want those kids to exit the program so they no longer need that service. You've got 50% of them exiting in 2nd grade, by the time they get to 3rd grade, 80% of those kids are exiting the program. That's a little more than 88 if you were 44 or 54, it's a little more than 80, that can't be right. Here's our EOG goal three. Reading, in this ESL, once again, 69% of those kids pass in reading and math. So, what does that mean? Well, that means that that woman who is doing that program, she gets recognized at the state level and is asked to go to the state conference and explain what she's been doing. And you know who gets the credit? Not me, Greg Singleton gets the credit for that. That's a joke. Greg Singleton won't need the credit, I don't need the credit, Kristy Poppinfaller needs the credit for that. That's the young one that's going in there and got those kids every day, and you walk in there, she's in a modular unit, about a third of the size of this room, with 20 Hispanic kids in there, and she has them at three different stations, and every one of them are working just as hard as they can work. Well, that's who's being recognized there, the ESL teacher. I remember I told you that we had 13% of the kids that are EC at our school. One of the slides is missing because I had to cover, here it is. This is the, one of the EC teachers. She's been asked to go to the state conference and present on behaviors, and if we don't have some challenging behaviors, you folks need to come to Taylor tomorrow and see some challenging behaviors. This young one is working on her master's degree in behavioral and autism, and she's been asked to go to the state and present, and they had to close the doors 20 minutes before she started her presentation because the fire marshal came in and said, this is more people than we can get in the room. And it's not just in Beaufort County that people are struggling with behavior, but when people go to a conference and they see something here about challenging behaviors, they're gonna get in that and get a C. And this girl presented, and I've got her, hey- And this girl presented and I've got her, uh, papers. I did not include that, but I'll be glad to give it to you. So she was asked to go to the EC conference. Talk about success, you can't see this, I'm not a real good photographer. This is a bunch of third graders. This back where it, it's been enlarged so much, it's not very clear. There are Washington High School students that come over to Taylor every day and read with kids. And they are having a big time. Here's our challenges. I spent too much time on successes because we got a bunch of challenges at Taylor. We've got declining enrollment, decreased in such instructional support, high amount of assessments. I didn't bring that slide this year, my flip got on me last time. If you remember, when I had that picture of my desk with all the assessments on it. That's how much is required of the third grade teachers to assess these kids. He's working on that at state level. Sharing students, I have kids sitting in hallway at four o'clock sometimes waiting for buses to get there. We need to improve that transportation. And Jerry Wynn had a plan to do that. Here's the title of the night, increased students with mental health concerns. Here's your demographics, here's your change in populations in the school. This is the summer when I had three classes spread out on the conference table going over. This is the kids I sent to John Spaw. There was three point one percent difference in white and black population. In my third grade this year, I have eight percent difference. In the second grade, there's eighteen point four percent difference. So that's a challenge there. That's something we're gonna have to address. When you got staff members willing to dress up like this, you know things are good. They're gonna dress up like characters in books for Character Day, not Halloween. And we decided to take one topic and talk about it at a later date. So I deleted a couple of slides. So I'm gonna end with this slide. This guy right here is an old cat. He's ninety-one years old, he's older than Mark Doan. Ninety-one, he comes to our school to volunteer. This man was taken out of college in World War II, put on a ship as an officer. He carried the components of the barn, of the bomb to the islands in the Pacific. Didn't have a clue what was on his ship. I wanted to get a picture of his Navy. He's torn his house apart today and said he couldn't find the picture he wanted me to bring. Cause I deleted a couple of slides and that's what I'm gonna end with. That man came to school, ninety-one years old, and said, I saw a kid and I want to help try to teach to read. That kid came from Vietnam, didn't know an English word. But this man was gonna try to help that kid learn to read. And that's what he's doing in our school system. That's the kid he helped learn to read from China. And he's still coming to our school to help us read. That's the positives we have in our school system. We have challenges, or we can meet those challenges. I thought that might be the shut up. We've got challenges, we can face them. And, uh, we'll talk more, I think, at a later date. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm gonna try to go through as quickly as I can. Obviously, you have been waiting a long time for the end of, of this session. And I just want to go through very quickly and just give you a little rundown of our demographics. Currently at the EdTech Center, we have eighty students. And, uh, demographically, we have sixty-two point five percent black, twenty-one percent white, and twelve percent Hispanic. I did not include the male female, I forgot to do that, so I will just say that to you. We have fifty-two male students, which is sixty-five percent of our population. And we have twenty-eight female, thirty-five percent. And now, as you look down the grade levels, I started with grade twelve and went downward, you can see that the concentration of students are of course in grades ten, eleven, and twelve. Pretty much balanced through those three grade levels. Grade nine, just five. For the middle school, we have five students altogether, three at eighth grade, one at seventh grade, and one in sixth grade. Staff members. We have one teacher per subject area at the high school level. So that's math, science, social studies, and, uh, English. We have a PE teacher. We have one middle school teacher. He teaches all subjects. We have one teacher assistant in our computer lab. The computer lab is set up for credit recovery, which that would be students that are taking online classes to recover credits, mostly due to attendance failures. We have one pathways director, one principal. And throughout that, we have five new staff members this year. So, part of our challenge is, I'm going a little ahead of myself, is to make sure that those staff members are brought in to the team. And one of the things that I think is very, very critical at our schools particularly is we all have to work together, we all have to be on the same page. One of the things that I have been impressed with at my school this year is the positive school culture. Each one of those people that we hired this summer and each one of the people that are there right now at the EdTech Center, I can say are fully committed to doing whatever it takes to get those kids to come to school, to do their work, and to graduate from high school. Now, I'm not gonna say that we're successful on all accounts, all the time. But that is our commitment for this year. The teachers and staff members, when I say staff members, I'm including the custodial staff, our office staff. We stress upon them all the time, be positive with these kids. Continue to always say, you can do this, you can do this, you can do this. Because so many of our students really don't think they have anything beyond the EdTech Center. Our weekly staff meetings, you go over everything that has transpired during the week. The teachers can come in and say, so-and-so is having an issue with whatever. And we can brainstorm ideas to help a particular student or we can brainstorm ideas to help the teacher to deal with that student. Student accountability. What we want to do is to make students aware and to understand that they are responsible for their learning. The teachers are there to support them, but it's ultimately their responsibility to take what the teachers are giving and run with it. Behavior management, now this is something that I thought was going to be a huge issue when I came to this school. And it is not. The teachers work together. They all basically are asking the same things of all of the students. And for the types of students that we have there, we really don't have a lot of issues. One of the things that we're looking at to start in the second semester is a point system for student success where the students will have a log and daily, teachers will add points on for attendance, for good behavior, for getting their work done in the classroom, and whatever else we think is necessary for them to be successful. And this way, the students can keep track of their own successes. I want to stress that the community has really put efforts behind the EdTech Center and, and moving it forward. The Bright Futures Council has done so much for our kids. They have brought in guest speakers. We've had people from the Community College to come in and talk about the, um, possibilities at Beaufort County Community College. We are going to have this week a special guest, which is a rapper and motivational rapper, which I think will go over quite well with our kids. Um, we'll see, I'll let you know how that works out. Um, our partner through Bright Futures is the First Baptist Church. They have contributed so much to help with our celebrations with the students. Our teach, teaches the homeschool association that has worked with, um, our students to get them to, uh, be able to be on the basketball team and to have actual games and so forth. The kids absolutely love it. I can't say enough, um, also about North Carolina Vocational Rehab. This year, they have considered all of our students to be at risk. So they have been able to come in, do some career assessments, um, and give the students at our school the opportunity to work with people who can really show them how to transition beyond high school. This is just a picture of the First Baptist Church. Last weekend, they prepared chili kits for all of our students. And the ingredients were in the kit, the kids just have to take it home and they actually gave them hamburger as well. Um, I also want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to Beaufort County Schools. Technology has brought us in two Chromebook carts, they have been wonderful. The technology equipment is a little outdated at the EdTech Center and this has been a godsend. I-Ready, thank you to Curriculum for bringing that in for our middle school students. It's going to be a great assistance to our middle school teacher. Keep in mind, he teaches three grade levels and all subjects, that's twelve preps. Um, our instructional coaches have been more than willing to come in and work with teachers to show them what kinds of things they can do to motivate the students. Our transition coordinator was the one that got together with vocational rehab and did the career assessment. She's doing a follow-up with each one of the students individually. Thank you to Maintenance, they've done a wonderful job trying to get our gym back in order. And, um, Michelle Orros with her grant. I think by the end of this week, we'll be up and running for our first game. Amy Bennett and Danny Newton and I were able to go to the Alternative School Conference this, about two weeks ago. We got so much good information from there that we're going to implement at school. It was wonderful. And it was cheap, seventy-five dollars a person. We've got a student doing I-Ready, can't really see it, those are the kids using new Chromebooks. Challenges, our challenges are basically the same as everybody else's, limited resources. Thank you for everything that all of you do in this room, but we wish we had more. Particularly personality, um, the teachers are stressed. They each one have to do at least four preps a day and it is difficult. Many of them teach combined classes like English three and four in the same room. Attendance is, uh, for students is a challenge for us. It continues to be a challenge, we chip away at it and hopefully we'll, uh, reach our goal by the end of the year. Parental involvement, we just wish we could get them to come to the school. I've had great positive parental support when I call them on the phone, but they do not come out to the school only when I ask. And I wish that we could get them there more often. And I don't know how to turn this on, but this is a little video kinda thing. At the end of this, the kids just wanted to say thank you and thank you to the board and thank you to everybody from Central Services.
My name is Tasha Missine and I'm a tenth grader and I would like to say thank you for all of the tribute for us at ED.
Gomez, uh, here at EdTech and I just wanna say thank you for this.
Hi, my name is Lucius, I'm an eleventh grader here at EdTech in college and thank you for the Chromebooks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Danny Newton, I'm a middle school teacher here at EdTech.
And I'm Amy Bennett, I teach PE here at EdTech.
And on behalf of the staff and faculty of the EdTech, uh, Center.
We would like to say thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
And thank you, we really do feel supported.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions? Last but not least.
Oh, there is one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Four. The Hispanic. With English and all of that.
Good evening, I know y'all are probably glad to see me, cause that means it's the end. Or the end is near anyway. Of course, I'm Charles Clark, I'm the principal at Northside High School. Some people call the Northside High School. Assistant Principal, Ms. Jennifer Cornelius, uh, couldn't do it without her for sure. And our sit chairperson is Ms. Beth Hubers. We've had, um, a great year this year, or this past year. Um, we have four hundred and thirty-five students, you see our grade levels are pretty much balanced. We have two hundred and ninety-six white students, ninety black students, forty-one Hispanic, eight multi, and, um, and then zeros for the rest. Free and reduced lunch, forty-seven percent. The, the, if, if, the numbers were correct, which I'm sure they were, seventy-five percent at Northeast and fifty-four percent at Bath. That does not average out to be forty-seven percent. The, the difference is, is at the high school, kids will not always turn in their free and reduced lunch forms. Um, so that's why our number is a little bit skewed there. The three National Board Certified Teachers, that number is dropping. The state several years ago quit paying for the teachers to become National Board Certified. Now they have to pay that out of their own pocket. So that number has dropped over the last few years. I think we were at the highest at like seven maybe. So that number's been cut in half. The accountability for this past year, we had, uh, math course rigor, which what that means is how many of our graduates last year had taken and passed Math Three, or where you and I probably call that Algebra Two. But not over ninety-five percent passed that. Once it gets to ninety-five percent, they don't give you the exact number, they just say greater than ninety-five percent. Um, the ACT, one of our flagships as far as, as far as being proud of some of the accomplishments we've made. Our, this year's senior class had an eighteen point four average composite. The minimum requirement to get into any, uh, UNC university system is a seventeen. Sixty, sixty-six point seven percent of our students scored a seventeen or better. That's a sixteen point seven percent jump from last year. So, it's the highest we've accomplished since, since they've been requiring the ACT for all juniors in March. So that's an outstanding accomplishment, we're very proud of that. ACT Work Keys, eighty-two point nine percent. So that means out of all the students that have taken a completer course in CTE, eighty-two point nine percent of them scored a silver, gold, or platinum on their ACT Work Keys test. Again, a record high for Northside High. Four-year graduation rate, eighty-eight point seven. I really want to hit ninety percent, but again, a record high for Northside High. EOC Composite, now for the bad. EOC Composite, Math One, English Two, and Biology, forty-six point six. That is a six, point six percent drop from last year. And we have not met growth in the last three years, which is one of our major concerns. So the focus, what are we doing as far as initiatives at Northside? We've been doing school-wide walkthroughs to observe best practices. Our teachers observing teachers. Professional development's focused on instructional technology. We're trying our best to improve instruction in the classroom and we feel that instructional technology is one way to do this. So we are providing instructional technology once a month for our teachers during their planning period. So they're not required to have to stay after school. Instructional rounds where colleagues observe each other and provide feedback. This has been one of the most beneficial and one of the most proclaimed by the teachers that they feel is most beneficial for them is to be able to go into these classrooms, not only see what those teachers are doing, but also the feedback that they receive from the visiting teachers. So the teachers are really benefiting from each other in this and, and we've done that several times through the NC new schools, which we no longer have. Focus on the BCS benchmarks, we're looking to try to improve our Math One and Biology. I did make a personnel change last year and, and improved our English Two scores, seven percent. So we were very pleased with that. So we've made a, a couple of changes in Math One to try to see that same improvement by focusing on teacher strengths. Some of the more, some more initiatives at Northside, we, one thing we've really done well, I think, in the last probably year and, and this year, it makes two years, we're focusing on the whole student. The guidance counselors are now traveling with the students. When I first got there, one guidance counselor was responsible for ninth and tenth graders and then they kinda passed them on to the other guidance counselor. So it was kinda like a transition within the school. So we've decided to make it where every guidance counselor's assigned to that kid for four years. And so, one guidance counselor has the ninth and eleventh graders and the other guidance counselor has the tenth and the twelfth graders. And so they just keep rotating with those kids and they follow them throughout their four years at Northside. And so they really have a good understanding of what these kids want to do and how can they help them get there. That's pretty fast. So these, these guidance counselors are working extremely hard and, and they're having conversations with the parents and, and I guess maybe part of it's because we are a small school, four hundred and thirty-five students, so roughly they have about two hundred and fifteen kids each. But that's still a lot of kids and a lot of parents. And so they're taking the time to sit down with these parents and, and plot out their four years, so to speak. And they're helping them not only figure out what they want to do, but how to get there. And it's okay, they, as I say, we write it in pencil because kids are gonna change their minds. So we erase it and we put something else. So, that's the- So that's the great thing about these conversations that are taking place, and the counselors are going into the classrooms. They've been working with CFNC the last two weeks. We had the applicant, the college application week where you could get free college applications, and we had a tremendous success with that. Kids are just applying to colleges all over the United States, not just in North Carolina, so they're benefiting from that as well. We're also bi-monthly honor, homeroom meetings to prepare for the BCS grad program and meeting our students' basic needs, like I said before. Challenges. Student recruitment, and it's, it's hard for me to say that, being a public school product and being a lifer in Beaufort County, but we are having to recruit now. I'm having to compete against not only private schools, home schools, but also virtual public schools, NERSBA, early college. So there's a lot of competition out there, and so we're trying to, I guess you would say, advertise all the great things that are going on at Northside, and me personally feel like there are a lot of great things going on at Northside. So we're working diligently to prepare, to encourage students to attend Northside with all the opportunities we have to offer, but we're still losing fifteen to twenty-five percent of our ninth graders every year. Most of those are going either to the early college or NERSBA. We do lose a few to other places, but that's where the majority of them go. This, this coming year, I got the numbers from Bath and Northeast. We have a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-seven, I believe it is, a hundred and twenty, might be a hundred and thirty-seven that are coming, so you roughly figure if we're going to lose twenty percent of those, that's, that's a significant amount. That's a teacher, I mean, really, when you look at it that way. Also, additional support and opportunities, opportunities for students to participate in remediation and college courses. Of course, because of our location, they are limited on the, due to the lack of transportation. We're, we're kind of isolated, to be honest with you. We're out in, some people would say in the middle of nowhere, but everywhere is somewhere, so we're in a great place. We're in a good location. But those kids that are isolated in certain areas, they can't get to us more, they can only get to us by that orange bus that goes by their house every day, and they can only get back home by that orange bus that goes by their house every afternoon. So those students are hard to get, to keep for remediation, and without that transportation, that's difficult. Teacher retention, I was counting these numbers up over the Thanksgiving weekend thinking about this presentation, and we have hired twenty-one of the thirty-seven certified positions in five years. I know you could say that's, that's a lot of turnover, Mr. Clark. Maybe it's a concern with you and not other issues, but that could be it, but I hope not. But we have hired twenty-one people, so that's, that's a big turnover, and finding those people is becoming more and more difficult, especially, so what I've done is I've made contact with East Carolina, and we've gotten two student teachers this year, and we've also gotten some practicums and some what I call homebodies. We got two students that are doing their practicums at Northside that graduated from Northside, so they want to come back and be a part of Northside High School. And that's, I've always said that. I said that when I was at Northeast. I said it when I was at CMS. If I can get these kids to come through the door, or young adults to come through the door, the school's going to sell itself. Northside's a great school. It's going to sell itself, but I got to get these teachers to come to the interview and come and see what they, what we have to offer. But that's how we're doing it, and so hopefully that's going to work out in the long run because more, East Carolina is sending us more and more practicums and more and more student teachers, so I'm thankful for that. And of course, Math I, I've already mentioned, we have to increase those results, and some of those classrooms, class assignments that I made decision to change earlier this year, I'm hoping are going to make a difference in that. Any questions?
Any questions? Last chance to ask a question.
Wait, I skipped one. Let me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Taking up your time. I thought it went, I thought it went the wrong way, and I knew I always say success for last. WITN selected Northside as a cool school. The, the participation was unbelievable. The kids just, I mean, I was amazed. I was amazed. We have dedicated faculty members who are guiding our students to become successful adults. We have motivated students. Four of our students, which were highlighted in the cool school segment, four of our students are going to complete their high school diploma and a two-year degree in four years at a traditional high school. As far as I know, according to Beaufort Community College, that's the first time that's happened in the state of North Carolina, so that's outstanding. We created a college-going culture with the help of NC New Schools. These numbers are phenomenal. More students are qualified to attend the UNC university system than ever before, like I mentioned earlier. Seventy-six out of a hundred and five of our junior classes, students have taken a hundred and sixty-five classes of four hundred and ninety-five semester hours. You do the math at four hundred dollars a course, which is what roughly they cost, and you do that math and see what we've saved those, those parents. And eighty-three out of a hundred and four of our seniors have taken four hundred and forty-one classes, thirteen hundred and twenty-three semester hours. That's just amazing how much work that those kids have put in. They have raised their levels of expectations, and they have reached the goals that they're trying to reach. We got more kids going to college and more kids wanting to come back and be a part of Northside High School. And then the teaching working conditions survey, last but not least, ninety-five percent of teachers feel Northside High School is a good place to work and learn compared to eighty-six point five percent in two thousand and twelve. That survey's only done every other year, so, all right. Now, any questions?
Any questions?
You should have won Cool School.
I thought so too. I was a little bit biased, but I didn't.
I watched all of them, and I was biased too.
I got a question if they'd, okay. I've been waiting all night.
Yes, sir.
Early on in the presentation tonight, I brought it up and said later is the time to talk about it. Well, let's talk about it right now. What is the answer? Don't worry, this is up to Don's part with the issue, Don. So what is the answer as far as student enrollment at our high schools? Because when I look across the river, and, and, and what I'm saying is what you were talking about, he calls student recruitment. Because, you know, there's another side of the story that I don't want to go against, but I look at the low-performing schools that we have. Well, Southside damn follows into that. Their enrollment has dropped tremendously, and as their enrollment drops, resources available at that school drops, and I'm just seeing an alarming case of what's happened at that school now, and I don't think it's caught up with you yet.
We're not low performing, but our, but our enrollment's dropping.
You're busy down the road.
Yeah, I'm hoping not.
If you don't have students, you're not going to have teachers. So what, what is the answer? How do we address that? Because obviously, we support these other avenues, but we can't keep leaving students out of our high schools for the sake of having these other opportunities. I mean, it's not popular, but it's, it's something that we better talk about.
My opinion, my opinion would be that we would look at a recommendation that schools that are taking our students would not have any more access than what that, that student body population represents in terms of the overall groups of, if the Southside population makes up twenty-five percent of the early college potential population, then no more than twenty-five percent of the incoming freshmen, in my opinion, should come from Southside, and, and we need to be fair when we look at it that way. And, and I, we don't have the numbers. I can show you those. I think you're going to see a large percentage of Southside students represented there. And, and they're not always the top students, but you certainly are taking students that are, the, the removal of those students from the student body have a negative impact on the overall school performance and proficiency. There's no question about that. I might have the same conversation with the folks over at NERSBA. Our, our freshman class at NERSBA, and I say ours because I'm serving on the board with Matt over there, fifty percent of the freshman class at NERSBA is made up of Beaufort County students, and we don't make up fifty percent of the attendance areas there, and I'm going to make that same proposal at NERSBA that, that no more than whatever that percentage of students are that are made up of the potential population would come from Beaufort County. That's one way to start. The other is to look at issues of why we're losing students, why they're going there. The, the lure of college credit, certainly as Mr. Clark has said, we've got the ability to do that at the traditional high schools. We've got to do a better job of getting that message out and doing those types of things, but, you know, the market share, market analysis, looking at what we're doing from a business perspective is something we've got to do more and more of, and education's just not been in that type of business before.
But catch twenty-two situation, I mean, we, I know what you're saying because we had these conversations, and we support what's going on there because I said, Matt, I think there is a challenge, I believe, and I know you're on the board, so obviously, we support that, but the more that, that we lose, the more hinders us from being able to compete, to bring them back because our resources are going down. That's why I call it a catch twenty-two. I mean, we need to show that we can offer what they need, but as our students leave and our resources go down, we can't afford to have the resources at the high school. We need to bring them back, and I don't know how many people thought about it because I've, I've had it a lot, and I've, I've looked at the situation with it is catching up for our high schools quickly.
Well, I think one of the things that, that has concerned me for several years is, is that in the line of business, if you do a job well and everybody's happy, they tell everybody, and you advertise on that. When I advertise in the paper or TV or radio, I advertise what I do well. I'm not going to tell you what I don't do well, if, whatever it might be, I'm not going to advertise that. Unfortunately, with the school system, what, we don't get to choose what the news decides to advertise about us, and so often, that news is negative, and the only advertising that we really get out there are the pictures that go in the paper where kids and teachers have pledged for different awards and activities, which is all important and good, but I think we need to do a better job of advertising the good things. Very few people, other than those of us in, in this room, will get the benefit of all the great things that Northside offers. You've told me some things tonight that I didn't know, some I did, but some I didn't, but you can't put all that in the newspaper, and you can't necessarily say it on TV because it, it'll go beyond what some people want to hear, but I think we have to figure out a way. The people that are, that are exiting think that they're exiting for better opportunity, and I think sometimes they're simply not aware that those same opportunities are here. They're listening to word of mouth and not what's in black and white, and we need to do a better job of that, starting in this ring. We have to be a better guy, and for every negative article, we've got to counteract it with something positive.
The, the one thing I hope, and I feel fairly strongly that most people in this room understand what I'm about to say, just not so sure about the public perspective, is that both of those schools that we're referring to, they pick who they want, they interview, they get who they want, but more importantly, they send back the ones that aren't successful by discipline or by academics, and so then they'll go back to the home school. So if, if we're comparing numbers, and I'm a numbers guy, I mean, there's, there's nobody that looks at numbers probably more than me, but if we're comparing numbers, I, I just hope everybody understands that we're not comparing apples to apples in that situation because not only do they get to pick the ones they want, it's like they sort through the basket and then take out the ones they don't and send them back, and I'm glad to have them, but I just hope everybody understands that, that's, that's how it works.
Not only do we probably understand, but that's my, now we step into another, that's my whole issue charged in June.
Oh, yeah.
They say that they have open enrollment, but open enrollment is not if you can afford to feed the student and bring the lunch, if you can afford to transport the student.
That's right.
Because we have so much of unpopulated, look at some of these numbers that we've looked at tonight, free and reduced, look, check out the fiber level numbers in our, in our area.
Right.
There are so many students that cannot meet those requirements, so therefore, they are not in that, let's call it, open enrollment number that they preach about, so what you have is, right, you have what some would call, and I don't want to classify students this way, but what they may consider top students end up in those schools, so therefore, you're now trying to compete on the testing level with a school that's not playing fair.
Right.
And that brings up something I could talk to you about.
Open enrollment and open acceptance are two different things.
That's true.
They advertise open enrollment, so you can enroll all you want, but if you don't get accepted, you're not going to be attended.
But it seems like we're the only people that not understand that is willing to say that, and the people that have the opportunity to make the decision don't want to talk about that, and it's very frustrating, and I see it getting worse all the time, and I do not like being compared apples to oranges, and then people holding themselves up to some high authority because they're doing so great according to their standards, which I know is just wrong anyway, whatever. Okay, that's nothing. I feel better. Any other questions, Mr. Clark?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Well, that carries us, and I assume, Don, you must have something to say about this settlement, into an action which I know these plans are on our computers, but we don't have our computers in front of us. I have looked over it, but I'm not.
These have all, these have all been saved in PDF formats. They follow the line of what we're doing in a program called NC STAR. It's, it's aligned with our strategic plan. It's aligned with the state board's plans. It also is aligned with Advanced Ed, the accreditation requirements that we have that we're going through. As Greg told me earlier today, literally hundreds of hours have been spent in schools at EdTech as we pull groups together to work on these. You can take a look at the goals, they're individualized based on the school needs, and then the plans in terms of what we're going to go after the goals and, and how we get there are all included, and by board policy, we just have to have these approved, so we're asking for your approval, and they're included on board docs.
Yep, I see. So we're just looking, entertain a motion to approve what we've been.
I'm, I'm in approval. We approve these school improvement plans.
I'll second. Okay. We have a motion, a second, and I'll ask one more time. Any last discussion? If not, I'll have a debate set up. Anybody opposed to this plan? Okay. At this point, I'm going to take a motion to move to closed session.
I'm, we're going to closed session, pursue it, excuse me, closed session to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and 321 personnel records.
A motion second, get into a closed session. All in favor, say aye. Get in closed session. First order of business is to approve personnel agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose to that? Okay, approved. Before we adjourn, was there anything else need to be said? Oh, I thought there was. I guess you already said it. Okay.
One more meeting, December fifteenth, right?
December thirteenth.
See, I'll still be here on the fifteenth, thirteenth.
And the, the time is four o'clock, and then we'll have the meal over after that.
I thought the last meeting was Tuesday, so. At what point is it? You said I was invited. Is I'll do it.
Thirteen.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Got a motion, second, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.